Here's some fun ones to get vibes for. Okay.
No, y'all. No, Michelle. Pride, giving my nightmares, kind of scurrying through.
I try not to talk about some of the scary ones. I'm just, I don't want to put any unnecessary there.
Yeah. I appreciate that. I do enough of that on my own, just wondering when it's all gonna end. Uh, what did he? He doesn't ever shoot anywhere. I think, I think his son, his son has been living out at their place in Kansas and remote, you know, doing school. I think he's shot more antler deer this year than I have in my whole life. And they don't have small deer in Kansas, which is surprising. Yeah. Really? Yeah, I'm trying to remember. It was, they have that one week hunting season, I guess, beginning of December. And I know we got something, something. Did you get anything?
All right, all right, all right. Let's get going. So I have six oh one, so six oh one. The call is meeting in Saginaw City Council order. Please rise for the pledges.
I plead the latest to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the city, Texas, one city, under God, one, indivisible.
Thank you. Please be seated. Item number two is invocation. Reverend Farr is ill this evening. He texted me and said he won't make it, so I'll do the prayer. Please bow your heads. Dear Lord, thank you for bringing us together this evening. Thank you for the chance and the opportunity to serve this wonderful city that we all love and call home. We appreciate the beautiful sunny weather. We appreciate the opportunity to be here in the state of Texas and Saginaw. We hope we appreciate it and appreciate all the blessings that we have. We really are grateful. We're hoping to see the light at the end of tunnel on this COVID nonsense as well, so we're looking forward to that. Hopefully twenty-one will be a beautiful year. Appreciate all your help. We'd appreciate your wisdom tonight as well. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Item number three is anticipation. If there's an item you wish to speak on, please see the city secretary. You can fill out a brief form. People are allowed to discuss any item that is listed on the agenda. Number four is the consent agenda. We are going to, I'll go through it and then we're gonna pull a couple. So A is action regarding minutes of January nineteenth. B is action regarding resolution twenty twenty-one oh five calling for a general election. C is action regarding resolution twenty twenty-one oh six adopting information technology and social media policies. D is action regarding resolution twenty twenty-one oh seven amending the city personnel policy manual to include social media. E is action regarding building improvement grant agreement with Saginaw Laundry. F is action regarding building improvement grant with Hofer Builders. T is action regarding recommendation for award of bid for highway right-of-way mowing. H is action regarding approval of ESCO agreement for median opening and turn lanes to serve UCD Saginaw addition. And I is action regarding chapter three eighty incentive agreement with CTI Beanmaker. We are going to pull E, F, and I for further discussion. So if there's any questions on A, B, C, D, G, and H, ask those questions now or I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve consent agenda items A, B, C, D, G, and H.
Valerie, second. All those in favor raise your right hand. Those opposed? Let the record reflect, we have a forum. We have a full house this evening, so welcome. So we're pulling to item number E. For E is action regarding building improvement grant with Saginaw Laundry. Keith?
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Hold on, I think, Mayor Prokhor, you need to step out for these two? Well, do you wanna step out or just abstain? It's up to you.
I'm just gonna abstain.
Okay. That's fine. Go ahead. Sorry, Keith.
This is an item brought to y'all at executive session. I think the last, last meeting, building improvement grant, Saginaw Laundry on four sixteen Belmont Street applied for a building improvement grant to help improve their HVAC system to better suit the customers, especially with the, all of the dryers and machinery that's in that facility.
Okay. Any questions on E? All right, let's go to F. Keith, again. F?
I didn't hear what you said. I'm sorry.
Discuss action item F?
Oh, F, okay. This is an item brought by Tom Hofer, Hofer Builders for three twenty-five and three twenty-nine North Saginaw Boulevard. Applied for a building improvement grant for some concrete asphalt driveway work and some other items. This was brought to you at the last executive session, last meeting.
Okay. Any questions on E and F for Keith?
Just to have one clarification. I know we had some stipulations with respect to this one big grant. Are those being considered?
Yes, sir. They are.
Okay. That's all I needed to know. Thank you.
Other questions? If not, I will entertain a motion for E and F.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve consent agenda items E and F.
Charlie, second. All those in favor raise your right hand. All those opposed? All those abstaining? There you go. Janice, you get that? Awesome. Now we go to I. Action regarding three eighty agreement. And that is Gabe.
Mr. Mayor, we have a hard copy of some just minor changes to the agreement for your review and approval this evening. So the proposed agreement is with CTI Beanmaker. They would like to install a scrubber system over their wastewater treatment to mitigate odors. They asked for some minor text changes, which is in the email, the front page in your packet. Bren has had a chance to review that. He's, he's not with us this evening, had no concerns. The deal points remain unchanged, and that is a, they will install the system. It's approximately $200,000 system. Upon completion and approval after inspections, the city will reimburse 15,000 and then for four years after, so long as there's no non-compliance issues that result in a citation for $5,000 each year. So total incentive of approximately 35,000. We are looking at waiving the permit fee. You know, many of y'all are aware of the odor sometime. We're very thankful that CTI, a big employer in town and a good partner, is, is willing to consider this and feel like it's a good solution.
So the deal points we discussed previously are the same. The, the big pieces, it's just the small wording and some legal clarifications that has changed. Is that correct?
That's correct. I think some of the concern from their corporate is that, you know, every once in a while, because they're in a production environment, manufacturing facility, there will be odor. This mitigation system, it'll work as it's intended to, but their concern was they can't guarantee, you know, that it'll completely eliminate 100% of every, you know, odor that may be present. Probably no different than, say, a Whataburger. If you drive by a Whataburger, you may smell french fries from time to time. So that was just their concern and think it's reasonable. And I think, I don't know if Rick has any other information. He may have had contact with the, the plant manager. I don't know if there's anything.
No, I talked to Will. That's, that's his main concern is the subjective nature of determining whether or not an odor is obnoxious is defined in our code. So, I mean, you know, he, he is, their aim is, is correct, I mean, in trying to solve the problem. And I told him that, you know, we're gonna be fair with them and work with them, but, you know, our objective is the same, that we wanna eliminate the odor and, and this incentivizes that, so.
Valerie, you have a question?
Well, I was just curious how we were gonna differentiate what's overwhelming. You know what I mean? Is there, when you say occasional?
Well, I told him, again, an obnoxious odor is, I think, defined in the code as being what a reasonable person would define as being obnoxious. So it is subjective just by its nature.
Okay.
So, I mean, I don't know how we get around that definition.
Right.
You know, in a realistic way, so, you know, it's just gonna be good faith on, on part of the city.
Is it over a certain period of time? Maybe a short duration versus a longer duration? Is that?
I think, it's just probably the magnitude of the odor and what the response would be. I mean, if we determined that that's an obnoxious odor, and then we would give them a time to, to correct, and, which would be a, a short duration, you know. I think that would be the city's response.
What would a short duration be?
I think they have to define that for us depending on what the, the nature of the odor is.
Hours, days, weeks? What, what would we think?
I'm thinking week.
Week.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
So Matt Rigan and Glenn Reeves in the environmental, they do take samples routinely that it's, it's a sulfur compound, correct? Is that the? So they, they take scientific readings and can measure, which, you know, probably would trigger if we got into a non-compliance issue where we would say the reading is X and it needs to be corrected, so.
I would add too, talking to, to, to Will, the plant manager, again, they have a solution that's been effective. It's just had flare-ups from time to time, and that's the addition of a peroxide injected into the system, and that has worked. But that is a, an ongoing cost, so the scrubber, long-term for them, makes economic sense to, to solve the problem and, and not have to have this recurring injection. But if there were an odor issue that was temporary in, in nature, they could resort back to that treatment in the interim. So there is a fallback treatment, if you, if you will.
Well, I think it's worse during the summer, too, than it is the winter.
It is. I think relative humidity probably plays a role in, in how the, how the fumes or the odors get conveyed through the atmosphere, so.
So it sounded like we got into it. There would be a way to quantify some of this smell. That, that would, would help. I think we could do a little quantification, make it not so subjective. That would maybe help.
I don't know if there are odor meters on the market, but, I mean, we can do that research to see if there is something to relu, reduce that subjectivity.
I'm just, let's see. So other questions?
On taking their samples, I've got a couple of them, but on taking their samples, who are they basing their readings on? Is it something they've come up with? Is it EPA? I mean, they can give us any number, but what is it based on?
We perform the testing.
City staff.
City staff performs the testing, and that would be based on TCQ limits and also City of Fort Worth who treats our effluent.
Okay. And I've got one more question. Down on item six point one five, it looks like they've tried to add in pursuant to this agreement. I'm not an attorney. Why would they wanna add something like that in there? I mean, what's the purpose of it?
I'm not an attorney either. Bren approved the, the contract to form and also looked at the requested changes, so I couldn't answer that legally. It doesn't materially change the.
Bren went ahead and approved this?
He did. Yeah, he's reviewed this. He's also reviewed the text on the, the front page. These requested changes, they're very minor in nature.
Okay.
Yep.
That's all.
Okay. Other questions?
Yes.
Cindy? Go ahead.
Is this something that we could table this evening till the next meetings? I mean, we got this right before the meeting started. I really would like to have a, I know Bren's approved it, but I'd like to have a chance to read over it.
We can. I don't know if there's a, what's the time crunch on this, Rick?
There's not. There's, I don't think it's gonna harm anything to, to delay it a meeting, but.
What does the rest of the council think?
We're just talking a couple of weeks.
What does the rest of the council think about that?
That's fine.
Patty, do you have a question?
Yeah, I, I'm okay with tabling it. I just wanna make sure that it's clear where these modifications have been made with respect to changing the word overwhelming to occasional and then negatively affected to contributed to complaints from. That's occurring in the recitals portion of this agreement. There's really nothing in this agreement under company obligations, Article Three, that holds them to any standard. So is there a reason that we have not addressed what we are requiring them to do over time under the obligations of the company?
So, Mr. Mayor, I think I can answer that. I spoke with Matt before the meeting. The wastewater permit, they're a significant industrial user and they have a pre-treatment system. Part of their wastewater permit requires that there no, that there not be, and it's loosely defined, as we mentioned before, no adverse odors. So within the constraints of their permit, which is contracted with the city by virtue of Fort Worth being the end treatment of the wastewater, that's where the binding enforcement action is, if that makes sense. It wouldn't be through this agreement.
I would love to see the reference to adhering to permit requirements under this Article Three.
Sure.
Just so that it is built and suspended.
Yeah, absolutely.
It's a matter of, if they're in violation of the permit requirements, they're not necessarily in breach of this agreement. I mean, they can simply say, hey, the agreement doesn't say we have to comply with the permit requirements.
Sure. Yeah, we can go with Bren and, and add.
We can just put that in as a requirement, that they must strictly adhere to the permit requirements as a condition of this agreement. I'm fine.
Sure. It's reasonable.
All right, so if everybody's okay with it, why don't we, wanna do a motion to table? Cindy, do you want to make a motion?
Yeah, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to table item four I. The chapter three eighty incentive agreement with CTI Beanmaker until the next meeting. I'll second.
Valerie, second. Are those in favor of tabling the item? Those opposed? All right. Good deal. Moving on. All right. Item number five, consideration action regarding ordinance twenty twenty-one oh five calling a bond election on May first. City Manager Gabriel.
Mayor, I'm excited that we're at a point for you to take action on the bond election. We've talked about this for, going on two years now. Want to recognize many people, some of whom are in the audience. So Dolph has worked with our bond committee extensively. We have some of our bond committee members with us. We have bond counsel, in case you might have any questions, and financial advisor. So feel like we've spent a lot of time on this already. We have three propositions to go to, to voters in May. Streets, parks, and senior center, and a library. The total of all three propositions is sixty-seven million, four hundred fifty thousand. With that, excuse me, four hundred fifty-five thousand. With that, be happy to answer any questions, or if you have any questions of financial advisor or bond counsel, they're, they're available.
All right, so any questions on the wording and what we would be taking to the voters? Any question on the specifics of the three propositions, A, B, and C? What questions y'all have on those and how it's worded and what it says and what it Questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
Thought about one thing, just pending approval, so we have talked, Dolph's talked with Keith about, you know, once we have propositions approved, it's staff's job to bring that information out to the public. We are in the process of creating a dedicated website. We're all, kind of a storehouse of information. All our planning documents, many of these documents or all of them are things that our bond committee has seen and reviewed as they made their recommendations. So we'll have that website live shortly. We intend to put out mailers in our utility bills. We also intend to create door hangers and, and distribute door hangers citywide to the extent that we can and, and using our bond committee as resources. Happy for staff to meet and talk with residents in, in small group settings. Dolph and I visited our friends at Quilters this past week and talked about several city projects, potential bond projects were one of them. So we're really excited to start the information phase of this, and we'll do whatever the voters would like us to do and talk about kind of project scheduling once, once we know where we stand.
So any questions on the three propositions that are proposed? This is our, we've gone over this several times. I hope everybody's comfortable with this. Reminder on proposition A, the thirty-seven million, five hundred fifty thousand bonds for street and road improvements. There's a chance we could get matching funds from the county. I was at Tarrant County Mayor's Council last night, and we had the Tarrant County folks present their plan for bonds, for the bond election. It will be this fall. Four hundred million dollar bond election with 200 million for projects like this. The other is based on commissioner preference and special projects and things, so we'd be eligible for that. In fact, we can start applying as early as April to get in line. They, of course, prioritize shovel-ready projects, so we will be shovel-ready on a couple. So I would be cautiously optimistic that, yes, we can get some money. Don't know how much, can't say, but this thirty-seven million, there's a good chance it could go, it could go down. So that's, we can't say that. We will say thirty-seven million, worst case, but there's a pretty good chance we'll get some money, matching funds from the county to reduce that, that need. So that's, that's a positive. Other questions, though? Folks, we've gone. Cindy? Go ahead.
I have one question. Did you say that the money to go to help pay for the street projects and things like that is coming up in an upcoming bond election?
The, the Tarrant County is doing their own transportation bond election in November.
Okay. So that would have to pass in order for us to?
That's correct.
Get the money.
There's several steps that have to happen.
Yes.
That's why I'm cautiously optimistic. It's not a done deal, but it will be 400 million dollars for transportation throughout the whole county.
Okay.
And we will be eligible for that, so we would absolutely apply for that.
Okay.
And I, I feel confident we would get something, but who knows? Can't say, can't guarantee.
But to be clear, we would need to commit to the full thirty-seven, five fifty in May because we will not know the outcome of that election until November.
Absolutely.
And it's not necessarily a savings. It would be, it would mean that we would have more money in reserves for other road projects in the future, getting match funds from the county. So we certainly, we certainly have plenty of places to spend the money on our roads here in Saginaw, so I, I think getting any dollar we can from the county, which they've been very gracious in, in the bridge project and other projects, all of our road improvement projects that they participate in on a cost basis, they, they help us out a lot. So I'm with the mayor in that I'm pretty sure we're gonna get something out of it. How much? We don't know.
All right. Other questions on these bond proposals, propositions, sorry? Bond A, proposition A, B, and C. Everybody happy with this? You know, we talked before about this. As a council, we need to be behind these to give them a best chance of passing. We need to all support these. Staff cannot rah rah support these. Staff can just give out information, but we as a council can absolutely promote these and say, yes, I believe in them. This is why I think it's good. And we will need to be proponents for this to ensure it passes and to get people out to vote, period. That's one of the hard parts. So I wanna make sure everybody's on board with these items before we set forth on this adventure. This is a big deal for us. We haven't done this in a long time.
I love the letter arrangement. The ABCs of a better Saginaw.
Look at that. Patrick's already selling it. There you go. Market it.
Gotta, gotta market it, gotta promote it, folks.
There you go.
Very, very important.
All right. If no questions, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve item five, consideration and action regarding the ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash five.
Okay. Charlie Tucker, second. All those in favor raise your right hand. All those opposed? We're rolling. Let's go.
Woo!
Awesome.
And staff, thank you. This is, a lot of work has gone to get us to this far, so I really do appreciate it. All right, item number six, consideration action regarding council retreat proposal from strategic government resources. For that, it says me, but I think it's partially Gabe. Gabe and I'll do this one. You wanna start? You want me to start?
Sure. Mayor and council, as you know, we know that at least one person on the council will change in the upcoming election. Councilmember Farr is not seeking reelection. When one person changes in a group, it, it changes the group dynamic, so we're moving forward on a great many fronts. Won't speak for the mayor, but desire was to maybe have a discussion with a, somebody outside to talk about how we can continue to make progress. We made contact with strategic government resources. Dr. Mike Maury is here to talk about what he might offer, and, you know, the, the intent of this is to make sure that we're all working well together, continuing to work well together, and, and ultimately deliver value. We're here to, to make Saginaw a better place and deliver for those we're accountable to, which is our residents. So with that, I, I may defer to Dr. Maury, can go over some things and might add that he does this all the time, lots of cities. This is not unusual for Saginaw, Texas. Every city council everywhere probably has done something similar, so.
Thank you. Thank you, Gabe, Mayor and Council. Glad to entertain any questions about it. Just basically what we do is help you find a way as, you know, different personalities, different backgrounds and, and interest to, to work together. One of the questions we ask sometimes is, when does a team become a team? You know, when does a T E A M become all caps, T E A M? One time I asked that question, and the mayor of the city we were working with kind of almost came out of his chair, and he said, I can tell you exactly when that happens. It's when everybody's pulling in the same direction and nobody cares who gets credit for success. I thought, man, that's, that's not a good answer. That's a great answer, you know? But it's hard to do. It's easy to say, it's hard to do. And so the point of the retreat is really to talk about how you work together. We use some, some good assessments that are, you know, validated tools that can help you kind of know, okay, here's, here's my style, here's somebody else's style. And not to say yours is better or worse than anybody else's, but how do you put those together as a team? And then, too, to think through about what are the, what are the guidelines that can help you make decisions in an honoring and respectful and efficient way so that you have robust dialogue, but you all know how to, to rally together behind it? So that's kind of the purpose of it, never to say, oh, you're, you're doing this the wrong way, or it should be done different. It's really to facilitate discussion with you and help you articulate, here's what we want to be and do. So I'll, I'll stop with that and let you ask any questions you might have of me. I'd be glad to answer them.
Well, Michael, when we talked before, we also mentioned a strategic element to this training as well. Could you go into that and how that?
Yeah, that's right. I, I know y'all are on the process of looking at your master plan update, and, and that has largely to do with land use and, you know, how, how things are gonna be zoned and used what for. When we think about strategic planning, we really make a difference, a differentiation between strategic vision and a strategic plan. Because a strategic vision is really about direction. It's about where you're going. And that responsibility falls largely to you as the council, to say, this is the direction for the city. A strategic plan is more about how, how you get there. And that is more in the court of the staff to create. It must be in alignment with that vision. So one of the things we will do at the retreat is do some exercises that help you think about, as a council, where do we wanna go as a city in the future? What are our priorities? What are the, sometimes I call them the pillars of your strategic vision. Because as you identify those things and, and have a cohesive, you know, statement about it, it empowers staff to create a, a plan that's in alignment with your vision as a council as a whole. And I would say that is one of the most, you know, I, I, we do this with lots of cities around the nation, and I do somewhere around forty or fifty a year. And the cities that have a clear vision of where they're going, their staff is always empowered to help them get there. But when there's uncertainty because we just hadn't articulated it, we often see a staff that's much more tentative. And so anyway, that's, that's, and it, it's not our part to tell you, this is what your strategic vision ought to be, by no means. Our contribution is to facilitate the discussion so that you have good discussion about it and, and you can come to a consensus on it.
A couple of other things. This, when this came up, well, I brought it up, I, I'm remiss. I should have done this a couple of years ago. I thought about this, not just team building, but just good governance and are we doing the right thing to, to better our craft? I know I should, I can be better, I certainly want to be, and I think this would help the entire council, but also staff. This would include the council, plus Gabe, plus Dolph, but also recall, this will be a public meeting. We will advertise it as a public meeting, anyone can attend. Anyone. If anyone's maybe, I don't know, running for council, they would be able to attend this as well, hypothetically. So that's why we chose this time before the election. Talking, talking through timing-wise after the election, we're in budget season, it's drinking from a fire hose, certainly for new people, so I wanted to get this done, and then maybe we do again in the future, I don't know. We will have some output from this that will help. So that was sort of the thought as to why now, why this, this training, and Dolph found Mike and we talked to him, there's a really neat program and certainly the experience. Mike's done this a lot to help us through some, just some challenges and how we can be better. That was how it sort of came about, just to give you a little background as to the why. Other questions for Mike?
Just have a couple of comments.
Go ahead.
In the proposed approach, pre-retreat, Mike, you're suggesting advanced interviews for the city manager, says individually, mayor and council and city manager, that's all council members.
Right.
That you'll be interviewing one-on-one before the retreat.
Right.
And what do you intend to arm yourself with in those interviews, just out of curiosity?
Yeah, there's two or three purposes on them. It's a great question. One is to, you know, get a sense of rapport, but, you know, both ways, because as much as you may feel like, oh, boy, that's a long time of, you know, Friday night into Saturday morning, you really don't want to lose two or three hours just figuring out if we know each other. So there's a lot of help that goes with that. But secondly, it's really helpful to know where is each council person coming from, what really matters to them? And we will often create a PowerPoint presentation as a part of the retreat that shows, okay, here's the range of answers, not attached to any person's name or a way to say, well, he said this or she said that, but just so you as a council on some of these high-level strategic things can really see where is their alignment, what are the themes that come up over and over, and where is their disagreement, so that, you know, it kind of can help for discussion. So those are the main things right there, the, the rapport and then the sense of where are we all coming from and what, what does that mean about how, what we should talk about at the retreat when we have opportunity?
Ken, thank you for the clarification. One, one thing that may be helpful for you is a little different approach than what I've seen in the past, especially even here on this council, is that Kim Lee Horn is, is assisting us with more of a master strategic vision, more so than plan. It's kind of an all-inclusive, all of our thinking and plans all pulled together, also bringing folks in from outside of the council, feedback from the community. Gabe, I think it'd be very helpful for him to immerse himself into what we are going to be expecting as a deliverable from Kim Lee Horn's efforts in this master, master strategic planning we're going through, because I think it's a little bit more robust than just a land use thing, as you've mentioned.
That, that is correct, and I forgive me, because Gabe and Dolph did mention that to me, and, and that, that, I'm recalling that now, that's exactly right, and we would love to, you know, converse with her and know what they're doing.
Yeah, the, the fact is that we're spending a lot of money.
Yeah.
On that, and, and I'd like to make sure that whatever coaching is happening on the council's part, between you and the council at this point, are feeding into that.
Sure, there, there needs to be alignment, just like we're talking about alignment the other, yeah, I totally agree.
Yeah, so those are the only two comments I had.
Very good.
Counsel, other questions? You'll note there is a dollar figure associated with this, $6,000 plus the advanced interviews. I believe that's, I want to make sure I'm putting everything, yep, that's the piece, and that's on page three, just in case you haven't seen that. So now, let's talk a little bit about what the output will be and what we will get afterwards, what, can you discuss that as well?
Well, this is not what we would do in terms of strategic visioning, where you have, you know, clear set pillars and goals, because as Councilman Farr, you know, reminded us, that's really falling into a different category. But we will give a report on all the key items that were discussed, and as you talk about, okay, here's some of our strategic priorities, that'll be captured in that document we'll give back to you, so that it'll come from us, not from staff, so that you have a record of it, and it becomes a part of that ongoing conversation.
Okay, excellent, very good.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Gabe.
So if you'll remember, in the summer of 18, we did a citizen summit with a consultant, Lyle Summick, gathered feedback from the community, desires, wants, needs, there was strengths and weaknesses, opportunities and threats, sort of talking about things. We took that information and that helped create a strategic plan that we have and, you know, to, to put it in, maybe frame it, y'all are here to make 20-year decisions every two weeks. So we're, we're here with a long range in mind, though it may not seem that way, you know, these are long-term, we all have the long game in mind. So if nothing else, I, I think that this work effort is an update and a revisiting of, of when we all put that strategic plan together. The comprehensive plan, it's good timing because the comprehensive plan, as, as Mike mentioned, is sort of, this is maybe more conceptual in nature, and the comprehensive plan is a little more physical, relates to land use, future land use, zoning, redevelopment, that sort of thing. So to put it in perspective, I think it's time to revisit this. I'll bore you with the details of my own personal interests. I get a great amount of enjoyment of reading a publicly traded company's conference call transcripts, I find it interesting, I like investing and that sort of thing, but these are functions that happen in the corporate world routinely. So council manager, former government, was created to be business-minded and have a separation of powers. So you all serve as the chair and board of directors to give vision and guidance to staff who carry it forward and make that vision happen, so, you know, this is a page out of the playbook of private business in, in corporations, which, you know, Bren is not here to remind us, but we are in legal terms municipal corporations, so just maybe want to help tie that point in.
Any other questions for Mike?
I just have one for Gabe, I guess. I just want to make, I think we, we, we won't know if we're going to have a new city councilman. I think the deadline was February 12th, or, so if we know we're going to, if we know who that city councilman would be, can that person be involved in this?
Yeah.
I mean, as far as us paying the fees for that person?
Yeah, and, and I think Dolph mentioned that, that, that would be ideal, so, you know, I would also mention, Councilmember Farr has about another week and a half if he wants to change his mind, so, I'm just kidding, I, I understand the reason. But absolutely, that is honestly best if, if, you know, we'll know, is the deadline next Friday?
Next Friday.
If, that, yeah, so, so we'll know, and if we don't have a contested election, even if we do, it'll be a public meeting and those folks that have filed would be welcome.
From a cost perspective, though, it's $150 for the, for the interview, is that right? The pre-interview? Is that what I understand?
There's an assessment that you take online that's $150. The interviews are $2.75.
Okay, so from a cost perspective, I do want to communicate with, with the council, I, I, if, if it does look like the new council member is going to run unopposed, and it looks like that is the apparent next council member, I see no benefit in this council spending any money on me going through this process. So I, I, I would suggest that that council member spend those funds rather than me spending those funds.
Sure. Oh, yes, Mr. Mayor? Go ahead.
I disagree wholeheartedly.
Yo, Mike?
Because, I mean, I think Patrick would have a lot of input, having been on the council for quite a while, and, you know, we don't want to lose that, your views. I think they're important, and so I disagree with you. Another thing is, are we supposed to make the decision tonight as to the time, there were two different dates?
No, we weren't going to do that, we were just going to see about, see if we're going to approve this, the expenditure, and then we'd work with, with Mike to do a date subsequent to this.
And then the amount of money we would have to pay for an extra person is negligible. And, you know, I understand your point of view, Patrick, but I think we need you to give your input.
I agree.
That's, that's very kind, I, I'm just suggesting that I'm happy to, to be a part of the retreat, as it will be, the, a public meeting, we'll all be a part of that, I'm just suggesting that the pre-interview, the one-on-one interviews, so, I mean, if, if it's, if it's the wish of the council that I participate in that, I will participate in it. I just wanted to offer that up.
That's unreasonable, Mary. Patrick could still attend the meeting, attend the meeting, but he just wouldn't do the pre-interview?
Well, I think the pre-interview is probably more important, unless you would have one of the, the experience council member, being that that council member will have a different type of job, I think that would be a good idea.
Well, you know, let, let me give you an illustration from this last weekend, I did City of Frisco's council retreat, done it for years, and they have a council member's term limit, so he's not going to be on past May, provided we have elections and all, and he's been on for nine years. And when we looked at the, and he participated in the interviews and everything, when we looked at the team dimensions element, which you are doing too, and we saw the contribution that he's making, and the, and the council really picked up on this before I did, of, wow, when he rotates off, that's going to change the dynamics. And I, so I, to your point, there's a lot of information that if you've been on council for any period of time, you have, you bring, and just having an awareness of, oh, okay, this is going to look different, feel different, function differently, might be very beneficial to the team going forward.
I'll leave it to the council to decide.
What was there else, thank? Cindy?
Oh, were you...
Oh, I, I would like...
I would like to see Patrick participate in all aspects of the project.
Cindy?
Yeah, I was about to say, this is a really tough call because, you know, we do have a lot of value with Patrick. It is going to be a loss to the council, and if the candidate to replace you is unopposed, it would be kind of nice to get a feel for where that person stands, and I see the value of that as well, so, it's too close to call.
Charlie, what do you think?
I love your brother. I...
Will you turn your light on? Turn your, your microphone on?
I don't know. You know, this city benefits a lot from what you do now, and I still think one more input from you would be greatly appreciated.
You're, you guys are going to make me cry, you gotta, you gotta stop that.
Why, you gave me your phone number and told me I could call you whenever, so I'm good.
You want me to stop it? I'll stop it. No, it's only $250, so I say yes, I want Patrick's input. I, I value your, your wisdom.
Okay.
Yes.
So, all right, so, all the, oh, Mary, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to clarify, if we do know who the next person's going to be, because maybe nobody else puts in paperwork to run.
Right.
Then, I mean, I, I think we should do both, you know, I think, I don't know, would a, would a one-on-one interview with a person that's not even on the council be, be helpful or not?
I think it would be.
Okay, so I don't see...
It would be to them as much as to us, to, to understand those things.
So I think we should do both, I, I didn't want my comments to be taken as either or, because the...
I understand.
The amount of money, it's not very much for one person, so, too, I think we could benefit from, if we know who the council person will be.
To be sure.
To do Patrick and the new council person.
I think it sounded like a good plan, Mary. All right, any other questions for Mike? I was going to let Mike go sit down, there's no other questions for him, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Are any of the questions about this at all? If not, I will entertain a motion.
Do we need to change the wording or anything, that we're going to add to other council member or the new council member or, no?
You will entertain a new...
Will.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion that we approve the actions regarding council retreat proposal from strategic government resources.
Thank you, Charles. That's second. Mary, second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed? All right, thank you, Mike, we're in business. Look forward to working with you, sir. All right, next is item number seven, discussion related to belt mill development, for that city manager, Gabe Rain.
So Mayor and Council just wanted to provide a, a brief update in preparation for future action items, so you'll recall in November, the, after two years literally of preparation planning, the zoning entitlement was approved by the city council for the belt mill development, formerly known as the Crans Farm. There's a little bit of a two-step process, so the concept has been committed to, a development plan will come to you in the very near future, which will kind of lock down many key features of that development. You know, the, the biggest first piece would be the roadway and the roadway alignment, so we've had some initial conversations with Don Allen, Jim Makins and their group, of course, they want to get started as soon as possible. The, to my knowledge, that all of the residential pieces have been committed, so they can speak with some more specific clarity where each residential pod will be. Really, from what I understand, it's been favorably received, a very attractive development out for folks that want to see it, see it built. So we will bring that development plan back to you. The, the big issues like density will not change, what we're down to is roadway alignment, where the actual products, residential units will be placed, and then we will come back to you in the future with more details related to the funding mechanism, the PID, we've had preliminary discussions, the largest cost driver that would be a recipient of potential future PID funding would be roadway and intersection improvement. So if I missed anything, Rick might provide some comments.
I do want to add, like Dolph, like Gabe said, we've talked to Don Allen's engineer this past week, and he is anxious to get the roadway project started, and as Gabe said, the single family appears to be locking down their, their product. What is not locked down is the apartments and the, and the, the commercial uses, so I would see, and I've talked to their engineer about this, is that the final development plan would be phased depending on how the development comes online, so we would process final development plan, which is now a concept, you, you approved a conceptual development plan, we would approve a final development plan and a preliminary plat and a final plat, likely at the same time, in a phased approach. So you might see Belt Mill Boulevard plus a single family come in as a, one project, one final development plan with preliminary plat and final plat to follow, or simultaneous, and then the commercial and the multifamily come online at a later date. So, I mean, that's the plan. Haven't, haven't really talked to Bren about that yet, I was hoping to reach him tonight and then found out that he had been exposed, so we'll, we'll, we'll visit with him to make sure that that's a workable plan, which I, I can't see any reason that it wouldn't be, but...
Counsel, questions? Questions concerned? We're not taking any action. This is sort of an update. We're moving forward.
No action, just, uh, just, uh, sort of prepare you for future action items. They'll, they'll, uh, be proceeding through the, the spring.
What do you think timing's going to be in some of these items?
They're in a, in a, in a mode right now to, to go forward with the, the roadway alignment. So, it, there, I mean, you could see just a, a final development plan for the roadway itself. And so, the, the adjacent tracks would not be part of that final plan, unless they're prepared to go forward with the, the single family. But the single family would follow in short order, if not at the same time. And, and just as a matter of, of weeks, probably, maybe next month, uh, you might see that on the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I do want to make sure that we keep in front of the developer that the intent of the PID is not to limit it to just roadway improvements. So, funds as they are available through the, the PID, the expectation is to get some other city facilities out of those PID funds. And if not just PID funds, what opportunities exist with the TERS? So, I, I just want to make sure that we're capitalizing on every possible funding mechanism outside of GO bonds to, uh, make those facility improvements on the east side of Saginaw.
Yeah.
Including parkland as well, trails, et cetera, et cetera, yeah.
Exactly. Exactly.
Water feature, all that good stuff.
That's a great point. And, and when the, the PID, uh, discussions progress, there'll be financial calculations. We'll, there'll be a determination of what the development can support from debt capacity. But we've been very clear all along, uh, the desire for the, the park amenities, the council-level water features. And, you know, I, I'll say, uh, I, I think we've, staff has experienced this, uh, Don Allen and group, they, they very much want a destination location and a quality development. It's proceeded at a comfortable pace, so we're not, you know, this is taking literally two years. But yeah, it's well-received. On, on the note about the TERS, uh, that may be a consideration. In fact, uh, it's one of our potential work plan items. It, it may be that to, to accomplish all of our desires, we create a PID and create another financing mechanism with the TERS to make amenities to a standard that's suitable to the city council. So we're working on it.
If, if the developer can, uh, complete the design of the roadway, say by April, what would be necessary for us to maybe make application to the county as that being a reimbursable project?
You know, that's a good question. The only, um, that we, we, we can run it by the county. I have had preliminary talks with, uh, J.D. Johnson's office about, uh, Wagley-Robinson will need, uh, substantial improvements. Now, the precinct line is somewhere to the north of our city limits, so there's two precincts that would be involved. But, you know, we've sort of talked preliminarily that, uh, would make sense to approach J.D. Johnson's office as well as, uh, FICUS to tackle that all at once. But it, it's the right time to be having these discussions.
Well, we know that we're, we're spending, we've, we've spent county funds on a bridge.
Right.
And that, the success of that bridge is going to be tied to the success of how we treat that subdivision.
Yeah.
That subdivision is going to be a major user of that bridge. So hopefully, we can approach the county with, with that in mind.
Sure.
That we would certainly like to make sure that we're maximizing all of the expense of that bridge and getting whatever funds are necessary to make sure that that circulation maintains in good order.
Sure.
Just a thought.
That's a good point. All right, any other questions? All right, thank you, thank you, Gabe. Good update. So moving forward, item number eight is discussion regarding 2021 work plan for that city manager, Gabe Brain.
So Mayor and Council, I, I put some brief points to each of the plans that we had, um, discussed, uh, in the past about what these projects might look like. I haven't received any, you know, what I'm looking for generally this evening is to see if, uh, these are the right projects to carry forward. The intent would be, i- if they are, to bring a resolution to you in the future, so that can be approved and becomes binding. And then have quarterly updates. So, um, I can go through these items briefly. We've already talked about them once before. If you have any questions, please let me know. If there's other projects you'd like considered, uh, let me know as well.
Are these in any type of order?
Uh, no, not in any order. Now, once it gets to resolution form, which I believe the copy of last year's resolution is, is, uh, in front of you, is very simple. It's just under the goal heading. So we would do that same, uh, follow that same format. So, uh, bond election preparation, delivery plan, um, you know, now, since the council is taking action, we're in the informational phase, and we will proceed to, to getting information out quickly. Should voters approve, we'll outline a, a clear, uh, delivery schedule. You'll recall, we've had some discussions in the past about how some of those projects may, uh, be delivered and timelines. Talk briefly about, um, shared services with Blue Mound. You'll recall, we, uh, are partners with Blue Mound for animal services. We provide service by contract. I think that, that, uh, it's a benefit to, to everybody, certainly to Blue Mound, and it just makes sense, uh, being neighbors, that we provide that service. Chief Spears, uh, and, and, uh, Fire Chief in Fort Worth. You know, we're with Fort Worth and Lake Worth being on the same dispatch, uh, system. It's, uh, sort of like having a, a neighbor that's a superpower. So, um, maybe to use an analogy, uh, like NATO, military alliance. So it makes sense, uh, to extend the, uh, alliance to, uh, our next-door neighbors. My understanding in just doing some preliminary, um, discussions is that, uh, Blue Mound will have elections in May. My understanding is the, uh, council is going to change significantly, uh, so.
Mayor Alan Hook is retiring.
That's what I've heard, yes. So, uh, Mayor Hooks, who's, who's been there a long time, uh, will not be seeking reelection. And it may be appropriate to have a discussion, you know, in May or afterward. So, you know, depending on how, what the desires are, Blue Mound will, will proceed accordingly. You've created the Diversity and Inclusion Committee, so they, that group will be participating in, uh, information gathering and giving feedback as part of the Comprehensive Plan Project. We intend to provide a City 101-type informational course for that group in the future. Do a, sort of a short course to the Citizens Police Academy, as well as get their feedback on, um, outreach efforts, city-wide recruitment for positions, and then ultimately bring their recommendations back to the council for review. So, that committee has been created and in process. Comprehensive Plan, you'll see within the next few weeks. We will put out a community survey online. There will be stakeholder interviews that are organized. So, um, some of the feedback from the council was to engage, uh, certain stakeholder groups, like the Youth Council. So, Suzie has sent an email out to the Youth Council to get their feedback on this project. We will get the seniors involved, uh, in addition to our Diversity and Inclusion Committee. Probably when we get into it, this is a really big project. We'll have, uh, updates probably, uh, monthly, if not every other month, on where we're at. Ultimately, uh, that will yield a document with recommendations to be brought for the council for a formal adoption. Mental health services, um, Tarrant County has some potential pilot programs and cooperative arrangements that we will likely participate in the future. Officers will continue to, um, be engaged in mental health services-type training. We'll report, intend to report that to the, the council quarterly. Next two items are public improvement districts. So the, the Western Center Public Improvement District was related to Ms. White's property. There is a, uh, a new, um, potential future property owner. They have a relatively short, um, time period to do due diligence, but the way things are progressing, I, I believe that, uh, that property will sell and will, that PID will be created sometime in, um, 2021 and funded with the public improvements. So, working through that, um... Belt Mill, the same way. We, we've just sort of kicked that off, but we will identify the project plan and, and work through that. It may make sense in certain developments, and we have to constrain this all financially, to consider a TERS for desired public improvements. So that would be another district. We've talked a number of times about PIDs. If you'll recall, this is probably over a year ago. Time flies, maybe a year and a half ago. We've talked about how a TERS works, but a TERS is essentially another district that we would create, and we would have partners and other taxing entities that would commit their tax dollars to be used within that district. So, uh, our friends at Tarrant County have said, if the city created a TERS, that they would potentially participate at 50% of county tax value. That's money that otherwise the city would not retain. It would go to the county. Tarrant County College has indicated preliminary, uh, support of a similar, uh, level of participation. These are all things that we can use to, to fund, um, desired improvements and amenities, the, in the legislation. And Bren could correct me, uh, if he was here, but, uh, the intent is but for. So, you use these financing mechanisms, mechanisms, uh, in order to achieve things that wouldn't normally happen. So, uh, excited to, to consider some of those, um, opportunities. I combined a few items that I think are all somewhat related. We, um, had a discussion with you about doing some salary study updates and adjustments. Our intent is to bring, uh, a staff-level recommendation to you in the near future with some, uh, potential modifications. This is all predicated on the fact that we can, you know, we'll have to do this a piece at a time, and we can, it must fit into our financial capacity and our financial plan. You're, you're well aware of the number of retirements, especially recently. Uh, I'm very, um, you know, we're all very concerned about, uh, bringing in the next generation of people who have served this community for a long time. That preparation begins now, you know, to prepare future leaders. So we're doing that. We will have two retirements this month in public work. So that creates an opportunity, uh, and a need to address those items and those positions and, and, um, identify change. Had a concept, um, we've talked about a little bit before. Uh, I don't, wouldn't commit to anybody that it's defined or anybody has any expectations, but you're, you're well aware of the, the success in the, 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 the fund that the farmer's market and food truck spot has created. We talked about a potential small business or incubator-type concept in that area. That's something that we can explore with the market research and maybe bringing the right advisor or partner on in the future to, to plan out creation of a destination or, or whatever, uh, the desire might be. So something, yet-to-be-defined project, we can start the homework phase of that. Last, uh, section, and, and then I'll stop rambling. There's a number of projects that are in process, will carry forward. The Comprehensive Plan will likely identify some development-related ordinances that are in need of update or modification or change. Code enforcement activities, uh, honestly never, uh, never, um, stop. They're, they're always in a state of motion. Code, as you're aware from, oh, maybe before the holidays, gave an update about, uh, commercial code compliance efforts on Saginaw Boulevard. That's still ongoing. Sort of the latest topic that has evolved has, has, uh, been centered on some of our motels that need some ordinance changes to, uh, put some regulations in place there. Expect that to continue. National Guard project, the next step we're at is to engage, uh, um, you know, a federal-level advocate to, um, outline, uh, potential actionable steps. So, um, that should, we should be able to bring a letter agreement to you here soon in the spring, kind of outline, uh, how we can move forward on that. Other three items are, are in progress or related to the bond program. We've kind of talked about the Municipal Center Master Plan Concept, which would, uh, include a streetscape. You know, should voters approve, we'll have a cluster of, of more future facilities all in an area to create a unique sense of place. Really fun to think about that and, and maybe get to an implementation phase. The Parks and Trails Master Plan is in progress. I don't know that we've had a project kickoff, but I do believe the Parks Board is aware, uh, of that project. And we'll have more information soon. Knowles and McLaRoe, uh, as you, uh, should voters approve, would be, uh, funded by bond funds. Knowles, as you recall, is under design. McLaRoe would be a future project. And, um, happy to report that, uh, good section of the, east section of McLaRoe was, uh, completed. So from about Levon Lane to, was it Sansom? Sansom or so was completed, full-depth reconstruction. I love a, I love a good new street. It's a thing of beauty. So, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. I'm looking for feedback. And again, my desire would be to bring a resolution back, adopt these work plan projects before we ramp up and, and budget discussions and, and other.
Council questions?
Other items.
Cindy?
Yeah. Um, you know, talking about beautiful new streets, that's wonderful. I look at streets like, uh, Industrial Boulevard that are just in horrible shape. East McLaRoe, along the railroad track stretch, terrible shape. A lot of subdivision streets are also in horrible shape. I don't see any discussions for, you know, like you said, the 20-year plan on when are we going to try to repair some of these roadways, especially in our subdivisions? Is this something that we need to add or?
Yeah, typically, typically those type projects are included in your annual budget. We have the Street Maintenance Fund to help pay for those. And so we knock those out, several of them every year, and usually with the assistance of the county doing them, providing the, uh, equipment and the manpower, and we just provide the materials. We get about, oh, anywhere from a third to half of the cost doing it that way, rather than hiring a contractor to do it. So those local streets are, we're, uh, we address those by budget through the Street Maintenance Fund.
I just haven't seen a lot of repairs done, especially in Old Saginaw and, uh, on East Industrial.
Yeah, it's, it's part of the budget process every year. We provide y'all with a, um, list of the street projects ranked by the ones that need the most attention. So y'all see that annually, and we update that annually. So we do a street evaluation periodically to see which ones need the most attention, and we apply the funds we have available to, to the reconstruction of those streets.
I do want to add specifically on the projects that you, that you mentioned, uh, Industrial at the far east end, near 156. We've been working with Fuel City to, to, um, to get a, an authorized project through the, through the state to improve that intersection. It's, uh, it's, it's in horrible shape. The only reason that we haven't done something sooner is waiting for this, uh, this text dot to come to fruition. So that's working. In fact, we had a meeting today on it. McLaRoe, as it crosses the railroad, as you may know, the railroad has jurisdiction within so many feet of the, the right-of-way. On McLaRoe specifically, uh, Arlington Northern had, had a plan to come in and actually reconstruct those approaches with concrete. BNSF got hit with the COVID, uh, downturn also, and so they put all their projects on hold. You'll recall also, they were installing a parallel track in Saginaw, and that haven't, they haven't worked on that in several months because of that downturn. Uh, we've also met with BNSF on Minton, which is another poor, uh, approach. Again, uh, an issue of the street next to, to railroad right-of-way. And, uh, that would fall under the, the Street Maintenance Fund that Dolph mentioned. Fund that Dolph mentioned. We'll have to get a permit with the railroad to do that work. And so, they're on the radar. It's just, it's just money and resource. So, I mean, the county has moved from project to project. They've moved from McLaRoe to the, to the playground at the park, and, and then we can reprogram funds after that to get to the remainder of those projects.
Mr. Mayor, a couple other projects as well. So, East McLaRoe, east of Levon to 156 is scheduled to be reconstructed. You know, the vast majority of the cost in the Western Center pit or Miss White's property will be a future extension of Western Center to kind of tee into East McLaRoe. So, once that development kicks off, the intent is to reconstruct that portion of McLaRoe in addition to the new section of Western Center. We have the intersection improvement, which you approved the funding through COs last year for Old Decatur and Bose, which is out on the streets now. We should have a contract probably in about a month. Yeah. So, that's coming. And then a future project, we have Old Decatur. The North Old Decatur section would be probably sometime in the near term. So, like Rick mentioned, you know, our, our maintenance funds, O&amp;M funds kind of take care of our neighborhood streets. The bigger projects are in various stages of bringing forward.
Well, I just know, it seems like Southern seems to be going south faster. There's Western and North Hampshire and some of these other streets around here just don't ever seem to get any attention.
Yeah. And we can take a look at that. Off the top of my head, maybe Mayor Proton may recall, but I think last year, Green, was Green reconstructed, Blue Bonnet.
We did Western not that many years ago. It's in pretty good shape.
Western, I believe, that was HUD money, because that's a concrete street.
That was CDVG, two different CDVG projects, completely reconstructed Western.
It may be a street parallel to that that was, that I was riding on that was in bad shape.
Yeah. But fair point. Yep.
Could we maybe send out a list of the streets we put in the budget this year, just to refresh our memory? Because my memory's not that good, so it might help us, the council, just to be reminded.
Yeah. Of course, the budget is online, and Kim, Kim's got it here.
We've, we've got in this year's budget in 2021, I think we're still finishing up Anderson and Arcadia, is that right, from last year, is my recollection. And then we have included in this year's budget, spot repairs along East Industrial. It was identified between Blue Mound Road and Watson Boulevard. And then Opel from McLaRoe to Ruidoso, I never say that right, and White Rock Drive from Longhorn to West, West Cliff Avenue. And those are the big ones that were included in the 2021 budget.
Oh, Mary, yes.
When we make improvements to the neighborhood streets, is that something that we, the city, do all by ourselves, or do we partner with Tarrant County on those?
Now, we typically partner with the county. They provide the manpower and the equipment. We provide the cost of materials. We buy the materials and provide flagging. So, again, we save somewhere between 50 and 60% on cost of reconstructing those streets by having the county participate with us, as opposed to hiring a contractor to come in and do it.
So, we do have to, we can't always determine the timing of these projects.
Exactly right. We're a little bit at the mercy of the availability of the crews from Tarrant County Precinct Four, because they service other cities as well. So, we have a bit of an advantage that we have Street Maintenance Fund that we budget each year, so that they know in the coming year, we'd like to have these streets done. Weather and crews available, you know, weather permitting and crews available, we get them done.
All right. Counsel, other questions? Other work plan questions?
I just want to know that we are going to put this into actionable format with timelines. I know you want to cover maybe once a quarter what your progress is. I know that it's the, it has been communicated, at least by the council, that this be a tool used for evaluation. So, just distill it in such a way that it can be measured over the course of the year. That's my only comment.
Yeah. Happy to do that.
Excellent. Okay. So, this will come back in a couple meetings as an ordinance, right? A resolution, sorry.
Yeah, that's the intent. We'll bring it back as a, as a resolution, and I will try to put some milestones with, you know, probably quarterly benchmarks when some of these things. And, you know, the honest reality is, these will change as circumstances change, we get new information, that sort of thing.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you, Gabe. All right, moving along. I don't remember now, executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code 551.072, deliberations regarding real property. At 7:16, we are in executive session. We will return to adjourn.